Yeah.
Alright, so welcome everybody, we have a special meeting this morning, it's Friday, December 7th, 2018, and we're here with the planning board again, and Chief Barry, Lieutenant Carroll, and Cartagena Janier, and our lawyers, and our traffic engineer, and we're going to continue our discussion about Whole Foods opening with a TCO, and thank you everybody for attending, and I think, well Dick, you wanted to mention your observation this morning, but then I think after that maybe we'll go into the traffic presentation, talk about safety, I think that's everybody's number one, number two, number three concern, so we'll try to get to traffic, and then we'll go from there, thank you.
Alright, well, I'll start actually with yesterday afternoon, 4:21, went by the site with my wife, and the traffic was basically flowing freely. This morning, I came out of Kittle and saw a wonderful sign that says, "Go slow, otherwise we won't feed you," no, no, it was "Go slow, construction ahead," and it's a huge sign, so nobody can miss it unless they're blind, and if they are, they shouldn't be driving. And then went by the site, and the police car was there, which is great, parked on the side, which to me is great, it actually fit on the apron, so that tells me that when the light is a problem, someone can go around other cars without falling in a hole, and so that shouldn't be part of the plan, but it will become how it's been. But the traffic was free, it usually is in the morning, one lane each way, there were trucks, as suggested, on the inside of the barriers, which made perfect sense the last time we talked, and it seems to be working just fine, so my conclusion on that is, the things that the developer said could be done, were being done.
And I'll just add that, last night Con Ed was there, I think you saw him this morning also, Con Ed was there last night, what they say to us, is that they plan to be off the poles and give the poles a haircut, I'm talking about the 117 poles, by Saturday, the communication companies are supposed to come on Monday, more, you know, equally important is there's a meeting at 12 o'clock today, at Chapka Crossing in their construction trailer, which a few of us are attending, with Con Ed, Verizon, Altice, and whoever else, if I'm missing anybody, well, everybody necessary, and we're actually making some progress with these poles, believe it or not, not gonna win, so that was a good thing.
Quick question, was that a thick sign or an electronic message board that you saw?
An electronic message board on a little trailer.
Okay. So they can change that as they need to and update it?
It's on both, in both directions, so northbound and southbound.
Okay. We have one too, well, we don't need to use ours, we do have one. We talked about it, we wanted to save ours, in case we needed it, and then we're doing it, we can use theirs.
Well, when you talk about Con Ed being off the poles, the low voltage people coming on the poles, are you talking just about the poles on 117 or the one on Roy Brook Road also?
Well, there's only one pole left on Roy Brook Road.
I know, but it's a, it's a huge.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just saying, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying it's good.
Is that the half a pole that's?
Yeah, yeah, and by the way, the ones on 117 after Saturday will be half a pole too, because apparently when Con Ed removes their wires, they didn't give the pole a haircut, they take off the top half, I don't know if they always do that, but that's what they did on one, that's what they did on Roy Brook Road, and that's what they're doing on 117. There is only one pole left on Roy Brook Road, that is supposed to be removed today, that's Verizon, they were there yesterday, and they're gonna be there today to remove that pole on 117.
But the pole in the middle of the road, that's what I'm talking about, it's gone.
On 117, on Roy Brook Road.
Roy Brook Road, the one which had the Jersey barrier up against it, it was painted red, and hardly had any scratch marks on it.
Where the police were sitting at yesterday?
I don't know.
Is that the one?
That pole was hit.
Did someone fall yesterday?
Yeah, it was gone yesterday.
No, no.
The pole I saw yesterday was cut at the bottom, resting on the ground, still with wires connected to it, and then there was an officer there directing traffic around it.
Okay, what happened yesterday is a box truck, right, a box truck?
That's what they believe.
A box truck hit it, it was a hidden run, I don't think, it wasn't surrounded by Jersey barriers, it was, it only had the orange arrows in front of it, whatever.
There's, there's, it actually has Jersey barriers leading up to it, too.
Oh, leading up to it, right.
Yeah, and believe it or not, Verizon, I will not speak, spoke with them, they said they were supposed to be coming there yesterday anyway to remove the pole.
They were, well, that's what they told us, they were supposed to remove by today.
They came a little earlier than they were supposed to.
And yesterday, they were like, yeah, remove the other one, which obviously they didn't, but they're coming back today. But they had five trucks there yesterday, Verizon trucks.
And yet they still couldn't remove the poles?
They didn't remove the second pole, we do expect it to be removed today, that's what they was planned, and yesterday, when we talked to them, they kept on saying that, we'd plan on doing it by tomorrow, so that's still the plan, would've been nice if it had been yesterday, but they didn't.
Well, there were two Verizon trucks in the burden parking lot this morning, where the guy's inside asleep, so they're getting, resting up for today's job.
I actually have like three Con Ed people call me yesterday, only because Jill sent that an email about the safety concerns, and Jill was on jury duty, so they called, she said, "Call me," and they called me, I got like three Con Ed people on the phone, they're apologizing for bothering, and like, "Are you freaking kidding me, calling me 24 hours a day, seven days a week?" But they were incredibly accommodating, and they want to get these poles off, they understand the safety issues, and.
Yeah, they probably understand a few other things if that happened too, so.
Oh, yeah.
Jill's emails to them about the safety have been very effective to get their attention, that is, that is the only thing that gets their attention.
My question then, yeah.
They, they are concerned about safety, I mean, obviously they should be, but that's what, they're concerned about liability, because they have lawyers.
If anybody knows anybody on the Public Service Commission, I'd love to forward a couple of them up there, but that's, you know, they will make for a very good, a very good paper trail.
And, and, and obviously the timing wasn't great about that truck hitting the pole, but it was actually good as far as supporting our liability argument.
Bringing attention to it.
Yeah.
Exactly, like this is not a made up thing, this is real, and they get it, and yesterday, bad as it was that it happened, it got rid of one pole, and it brought the attention that this is, this is real.
Don't we have another chair?
Oh, yeah, there is. So that's it. You want to say anything? Just going to Lou?
No, just going to Lou, actually.
Just going to Lou?
That's all, that's right.
Someone to Lou's ready.
It's what you're with both tires.
I'd probably add that that officer there today is not paid for by SG, and it's not as part of the safety, I'm doing a survey as to see how many students are crossing.
Okay.
So I want to have, it's not traffic control, he's, he would help if need be, but he's really just seeing how many kids are actually crossing 117.
But a lot of kids aren't crossing right now.
Because of the weather.
Because of the weather, and because of the construction, I've heard a lot of people say they've been driving, so.
I just want to get an idea, you know.
And it's cold.
But I would imagine a lot of kids do cross, I mean, as you know, juniors can't drive to school, they'll go for friends to park in their parking lot, I mean, in the driveways and walk.
You might have to adjust the bags at the bottom.
It's a huge commodity, the apartment driveways of neighbors that live near high schools, juniors, it's a huge commodity, so.
I mean, people pay to like park in my driveway.
They do, they do, no, seriously, they do. I know one person that does it in exchange for babysitting services.
Yeah, so how many lawns I have to leave if they do that.
Exactly, it's a huge, juniors can't park in a high school.
Shall we turn to Lou?
Yeah.
Turn to Lou.
And later on, I can teach you all how to tie a bow tie if you don't mind.
Not the one you buy on JCPenney.
But I cannot, I cannot force you to evolve.
I would've guessed a clip-on.
No, no clip-on, I'm gonna show you later.
See Lou, I just turned 70, so now's the time, right?
Now is the time. So unfortunately, I mean, I was out last night at a hearing, and so I didn't get a chance to finalize this memo, and I'd like to walk you through two options that we basically come up with, that we support from a safety standpoint, and after the meeting today, I'll stay here so I can finalize the memo, and then you'll all have a copy of it, but this is one option where the poles remain in place.
So can I just interrupt a second, because I want to give background.
Already?
So Lou, I just want to make sure it's clear.
That was so fast.
Have a sentence record.
It's your longest run.
You got one sentence, congratulations.
Lou is responding to the applicant's proposal that was submitted to all of you, so you'll see underneath all of his notes are the same pictures that you got in your packets on Tuesday, so he is responding to the two versions proposed by the, or the two versions he's discussing today were proposed by the applicant, and he is looking at them for, from the town's perspective in regards to safety, and things that should be done to ensure that safety.
And your notes are, the hand notes and the type notes are from the applicant?
The type notes are mine, and the hand notes are.
You're truly.
Oh. So we have two levels of town.
So it's a collaborative effort, yes.
Yes, yeah, this is, this is, the town did some big, bold identification of what the applicant was trying to represent to you, so it would be understanding, and then Lou has further modified Bob's identification to add his notes as to what changes would need to be made for further safety measures.
Right, so, so this, so this is, you know, what, what you guys have had to look at so far, and these lines that I put on were really just to compare the different, the proposed plan and the interim, these really line up with where the left turn bay is, where the taper is, and so this was part of my review of this. So if we go back to this, this option makes the assumption that the utility poles remain in place, and that this utility pole that's at this point here is a budding concrete barrier that abuts it, and basically comes out here, there's, there's a taper here from a safety standpoint, and it comes around this corner also from a safety standpoint if someone is coming in this direction.
And that would be in a single plane, right?
So it'd be barrier pole, barrier pole, barrier.
Are, are we gonna practice some detailed drawings of that for the applicant?
When you say a single plane, you mean it doesn't like?
Put the barrier.
Yeah, it doesn't do that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so basically what we're looking at, right, is if this were the pole, you're going to have a barrier that's on either side of this pole.
That's like one pole.
But, right, it's only one pole.
By the corner.
And the other poles are behind the barrier, so it basically takes advantage of the pole as part of the barrier system, which is perfectly fine.
Because the Jersey barrier's gonna flare out at the bottom, and the pole could even got 12 to 14 inches, so it's gonna kind of sit in that line.
Yeah, but if someone who drove, that, that arrangement had, had existed on Roy Brook Road for many, many weeks, with the Jersey barrier joining up to the pole and creating, you know, if you will, a lane, or whatever you want to call it.
Right.
And I drive that very frequently, and it was not a comfortable thing to drive, even in no traffic, it was not a comfortable thing to come up against that barrier and have that pole in the road.
And that pole's right on the right-hand side there when you're driving in the eastbound lane.
Well, I just wanted to share that, because, you know, it sounds like a smooth barrier that's being created there with the poles and the Jersey barriers, it's not that comfortable.
And what I was gonna say was, I understand that there is a detailed drawing that condition that we're gonna see this morning, so we can look at.
It's a New York State standard detail, I believe.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it, do you have it? I, I don't have it.
I tried to take one up there, I'm gonna go.
We can pull that, I don't, I don't have that on my computer.
I'd just like to ask, just, just, sorry.
You want to go get one and leave, bring it back?
Yeah.
That's fine, but I'd like to see what the applicant's gonna do, because the state, the state is not involved in this, so whether this is done to state standards or not, you know, we have no guarantee from the state that that's true.
Right.
I'd like to see a drawing, and I think I asked this in our meeting the other day, I'd like to see a drawing of that, because for us to approve something which is based on words, or even a state standard drawing that the state isn't validating, is something that I, I can't do until I see it.
I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, I have Jeremy on the phone, he's got a court conference at 10, so he's on the phone.
Hi, Jeremy.
Sorry to interrupt you a bit.
So, you know, the, the other thing that could happen, just so that we can finish this poll, is if you had Jersey barrier on both sides, to kind of go a little bit further on what your, your issue might be, they could also put basically a steel plate in front of those two Jersey barriers, so you really don't see that pole, so it looks like it's a seamless, you know, concrete barrier with the steel plate that's there, mainly just from an aesthetic standpoint, but I think you can do that as well.
Would that cut into the 10-foot travel line?
No.
Would be provoked?
No, and, and that's why taking the barrier on either side of the pole gains you, you know, a foot, a half to two feet, because you don't have to put the barrier before, in front of the pole, and with the flared out ends on the bottom, you basically lose two feet, and so I, I would rather have additional width than, than have the pole right behind the barrier, because it, it is an acceptable method, and I agree with you, and I think the, the applicant can come up with something that everyone can see.
You think you must?
Yes, I agree, yep. So, so again, location of the three existing poles that remain in this option, that there, these options are very similar, but the major differences are the poles and, and the locations of the poles, right, because if the poles remain in place and we put the concrete barrier, then obviously we don't have the striping that's in the final condition, but you would have a 10-foot right turn lane, you would have another 10-foot through lane, and I think there's another 10-foot, it might be a little bit more now, based on whatever plan that they really come up with, but I think we have a lot of pavement, maybe up to 34 feet of pavement here in, in the southbound approach. I'm gonna move over to this box, provide one shared left-through lane, northbound, not in conflict with the southbound-through movement, I think Ivy, your point of having a conflict between the southbound and the northbound left turn is, is a, is a really good point, I'll say this, this is considered a construction zone, right, so you can misalign the intersection approaches with the cat tracks that they talked about, and that is an acceptable method, however, after you brought up that point, I'm, I was really thinking about what happens at 2 o'clock in the morning, right, what happens when there's no police presence, people that might not be familiar with the area, and God forbid someone was trying to make that left-hand turn for whatever reason, and so, you know, two to three feet of misalignment is, is certainly acceptable, something of the order of five feet that this was going to be, I prefer not to have a left turn bay, I also prefer not to have a left turn bay if it's only going to satisfy two or three vehicles, it's just not, it doesn't, it doesn't really address the full impact of, we have a lot of people that want to turn left.
So how wide do you think that enough amount of lane would get?
Sorry, you jumped in, I don't know if I missed it, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
How, when you say this is an acceptable, when it's a construction, how long is that? What is acceptable in terms of length of time that a construction zone can be maintained in this manner, and number two, a construction zone for 30 cars a day may be different than a construction zone for 1,000 cars a day, so is that company, is that variable factored in, like the time that's under construction and then out of cars, that, or that this would be acceptable, assuming that the feet were proper?
So.
Footage, probably.
What, what's?
Does that question make sense?
Yeah, it does, so what's considered temporary, it depends on the, the person that's looking at it, it could be anything that's less than a year, that is really considered temporary. Most of the time, any, any NPT plan would be anywhere from one month to three months long, and many times it changes, so you would have a construction area that, you know, in a month or two would change, and it would be different, but it'd still be a construction area, so, you know, this could be in place, in, in my opinion, you probably don't want this in place more than six months, and, and that kind of lines up with the full implementation of all the improvements that are here, and as you go through, as they go through and build this, obviously it would become less intrusive to the motorie public, because there would be less of a construction activity that's out there, so from a temporary.
Would it actually be less, because it looks like sort of, it's a, it's an on-hold program till the weather turns, and then all of a sudden, construction starts again.
Yeah, I mean.
So to me, it's not really like incremental improvements between now and July, what it is, it's like a.
Two different.
Two different phases, so what you're having.
And I think it's three different phases, I think one is the utility poles that, that are kind of beyond anyone's ability, although, you know, obviously you guys can push the utility companies to move those poles back, and so from this plan, you go to the other plan where you could stripe it out, make it a little bit wider on the southbound approach, but you're absolutely right, then, then you have that scenario that you're going to have until, you know, April, March or April, and until then, you're not going to be able to pave again, so you're right.
Lou, if we were to wait to allow the opening until the poles were removed, which, based on Rob's sort of summary this morning, maybe as soon as next week, so, but if we were to wait and to start with the plan that has the poles already out of the picture, does that change your recommendation about a left, left turn lane?
Yes and no, and I don't want to be, and I don't want to be flippy here, and so I'm gonna go up to that right now, and I can come back to this.
Just one final note, so if you do eliminate the left-hand lane, how wide is that northbound lane, and does it allow people to scoot around them to continue?
That lane, the northbound lane on the other plan that we had, probably is about 15, 15 to 17 feet wide.
So you could hang out, wait for a left, and people could scoot around?
So, so in theory, that's what you would have, you would have one or two cars that probably could do that, just like the striped left turn lane, but you don't have, you're not, you're not really directing people to, to actually sit in that lane.
Gotcha.
Which I prefer, and again, going back to even this plan where you have the poles removed, this left turn bay again is only 80 feet, so you have two buses, or you could have four vehicles that might be here, I, I think it's more important to have a pretty wide receiving lane for the southbound approach than it is to have a formal left turn bay, and so in either one of these options, I mean, you, you could have a left turn bay here, that you would have to align, so it's again, not in conflict, but I would still say that it, it's probably better just to have one approach, it's easier to manage from a police standpoint, because it is one lane, they could actually, you know, hold those left turn lanes, I mean, those left turn vehicles that are trying to make the left turn, and people that are trying to scoot around them, so I, I think, in my opinion anyway, if the left turn bay is not 150 feet or 175 feet, then it might not be worthwhile to do that.
Can I also add some point of information to, to this particular area, the work that will need to be completed next spring is, is, is right on that corner, you know, so if you have the left turn bay, and then they're under construction on that corner, you're further restricting the width of that roadway.
That's a good point.
That's the retaining wall.
That's the retaining wall that's here.
People sort of got used to it, and ended up taking it away.
So it's, you know, it's one thing to reduce it from 17 feet to 15 feet, or even 12 feet, but to remove an entire lane, you know, that's a different story.
So it's just a, I wonder if maybe you could get 17 feet, you probably won't have enough room for people to quickly pass by, I'm not sure you want to do that anyway through this light, so wouldn't it be better to, to make it like 11 or 12 feet, because the wider lanes are, the faster people go, so if we could just make this a normal and stripe it out, or put a temporary curb, maybe a temporary sidewalk on that side, anything to encourage people to go slower through here rather than faster.
There's also a very significant pole there, the traffic pole, so if you go too far on that shoulder, you're gonna have a very bad surprise.
So Lou, I have another question about this drawing before you leave it, the zebra striping which separates the right, the southbound right from the southbound through.
Yep.
Is it, is there a reason why we can't, we can't put that zebra striping between the northbound through and the southbound through, and then be able to realign the southbound through, so it's not in conflict with the northbound left?
In the temporary condition? Or in the, in the future?
Maybe it is a permanent condition, but why not now?
I mean, the purpose of the, the striping here is to align the southbound through so that it continues here, in the, in that final condition really is part of it, right? You have that, yeah.
But I'm, we're talking, the problem now is in the temporary condition, as Ivy rightly points out, I think that that misalignment is a problem, it's not only, I mean, it is at night because the, somebody's headlights in that left turn lane are going to, are going to really obscure the roadway from somebody who is coming opposite it because of the alignment of the headlights.
Right.
And the other part of it is that the, the cat tracks, you're not gonna see those at night.
Right, in, in this plan with the striping though, the alignment is pretty much, the southbound goes and continues, it is aligned, in, in this plan with the poles relocated, or removed and replaced.
I don't think so.
It basically.
It basically is.
Well.
You're getting real sad.
Well, well, I, I take that, I take that back, only because if we were not to have the left turn lane, right, and we would just have one lane northbound, see, see this line that's here?
Yeah.
This is the center line, and this is the extension of the southbound lane that basically ends up right in the middle of this left turn bay. Yes, on this plan, the, the other point then would be, if you take out this left turn bay, and you make this northbound approach as wide as it has to be, so that this lines up with the center line going, you know, continuing south, that would be the way to do it.
Well, I understand, no, I'm sorry, I understand that, but let's just say that we're not going to do that.
Yeah.
Is there a way to realign the southbound, the southbound through by changing the striping?
Yes, if you wanted to keep this left turn bay, yes, then you, you most likely could move this up and not even have the striping, just have a solid line here, so that this could align, this is probably off by four feet, I guess, maybe three feet.
It might be five, but.
Yeah.
Three to five.
It's probably half of that lane, and that's a nine foot, so, yeah.
That's a good idea, so, you know, excuse me, but, you know, so if you make the striping a big, maybe even a double line, you know, so that's really clear with.
Yeah, you can make this like a 12, a 12-inch straight, solid, white line, which would probably, which probably would work, to, to make the alignment and keep the left turn bay.
Okay, so if we wanted to keep it, I, I'd like.
Well, I, I would not recommend keeping, that, that's just me.
So we have two options, I like the one where you don't keep it, I don't have a problem here, because the scoot around lane, this scoot around lane right here, or the scoot around area, I know that'll work, and people will scoot around, cars can, trucks will have a problem, that's okay, and it's fine, because it'll move half of the, it'll move it faster than it moves now.
Well, the problem is though, if you're gonna have this controlled though by police, you really don't want people scooting around and ignoring the police, you know, direction.
Especially if, if you have kids, you know, that are small.
Exactly, so, yeah.
That's okay, that's all understood, and I agree with that totally, but as a, you know, I like getting rid of this because of nighttime speeding and everything, people not being.
Be misaligned.
So we, we can easily, easily, you know, say, "Just do it, we recommend you do it, if not, come back and talk to us, and we'll see if, you know, some other plan makes sense," and then we can, so we can move on, you know, with the rest of the discussion here, I think your, your work is really good, and it's very helpful to me to see, get rid of the blue thing, you know, in the temporary position, the light blue thing, and the dark blue thing will be available when it's not school time and the kids are, you know.
It's a walkway.
Walking across.
Yeah, this, basically, back, back down here, what I'm saying on this is, if we, if you keep the bus stop location where it is, there really should be a concrete pad just so that you're not walking off into mud or dirt or whatever, and there should be some defined walkway, whatever it may be, to the crosswalk, to the proposed crosswalk. You, you wanted to bring up.
I was just gonna say that the officer will be fine in that intersection with the cars.
Okay.
Yes, they will be.
So my concern, I actually like the bus stop where it is, better than the green bus stop, because the sightlines coming around that curve are not great.
Right.
They're bad, so if you.
They're not even that good.
Right, they're bad, so if you had all of a sudden a bus stopped there, you wouldn't know if you're coming around that curve, that a bus is stopped there, and I feel like it's gonna cause accidents, here at least, it's a straight shot where the old spot, you can see it if a bus is stopped.
And, you know, that's a good point, and I think that, that, good question as to why it is there, but if the roses, if Mr. Rose can get his neighbor to cut the, the top off their properties, then you're gonna open up, you could open up five foot.
For a walkway, I wouldn't put a bus stop there.
Oh, well, you can, we can see what goes there, you could have a bus stop where there's a gap in the guardrail.
Part of this.
There's a lot of things that could be done, but that, let's just leave it where it is for now, and worry about that, you know, later.
Well, because too Felix said, if I recall, that he was going to try to get the bus stop to be in Chapka Crossing.
We're ready to try.
So rather than move it, and then move it again, I'd rather kind of keep it where it is, which I think is actually a decent spot, and then I saw a lot of people walking from the bus stop today, I don't know, like, a lot of people going into the Chapka Crossing trail, I don't know, but I'd rather leave it where it is, and then let it get relocated into the site, and then we don't have to worry about it.
Let me just say one thing real quick, we heard that moving the bus stops is a, you know, like a sort of a arduous process, only happens three times a year, whatever, but there's another avenue that they, they allow the bus stops to remove during construction, which is simpler.
But there's another avenue that they they allow the bus stops to remove during construction, which is simpler. So we could always, they may not agree to do it permanently, but they would agree to do it during construction, that's just an option I'm throwing out there.
I think we heard that they can move it within ten feet, fifteen feet pretty easily, it's when you pick it up and move it someplace else that it's three times a year.
And that's because it changes the times, right?
Plus see towards during construction.
It it takes more time for everything to work from a schedule standpoint. You have to send out the notice. One thing I'd like to add here is that for this strip here, you know, where it's now, there's an extra three feet of pavement. And that's the scoot around thing, I really would want a solid line here, white or yellow or whatever the right color is for the right width of the lane. So cars don't feel they're in, they're being encouraged to scoot around, I would rather have it.
Could that be a Jersey barrier or protection?
So this comes down to one of the questions that I had, so you've got a Jersey, in this one, you don't have the Jersey barrier, right?
In this one, no.
There's no Jersey barrier, so this is the best possible scenario under construction conditions.
Yeah.
So my question to you, which I really need to just really understand, is we're talking about. Uh, assuming we eliminate the left hand turn lane, that we try to keep traffic in north-south clean lanes going thing, there is the right hand lane going here. How, but there are telephone poles located on the right hand, uh, I'm gonna say the east side. And if under this scenario, you had a fire truck. You know, so take the biggest piece of apparatus they have, take a ladder. And you had traffic and let's say it was like Saturday morning at eleven o'clock. And everybody's coming to Whole Foods to do their weekly shopping. And you had heading north to go because you service the area all the way up north. How much width is there, so assume that a truck needs twelve feet to scoot through if you, I know on the. Southwest corner, you still have the retaining walls, there's nowhere to go there. There's poles along the east side, I'm just wondering how, um.
Well, I mean.
I just wanna know that that they can get, that there is a way that.
From a, from an emergency standpoint, they they would actually travel the southbound lanes to get through the intersection. Uh, that that basically is, they they would not, I I don't believe that they would actually try to come around on the right hand side. Uh, normally they do the passing on the other, on the opposite side of the roadway.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, all those, they, as I said, they go down the center.
Yep.
Right, so.
And there there would be enough room to do that.
There would be enough room.
Yeah, particularly with the three feet that's been added.
Right.
But I still want a line there so that my, the normal drivers understand that that's not where they're supposed to be.
And I have a concern, yeah, I have a concern if if we're, you know, sort of encouraging this to be used as a pass around because. With or without the bus stop there, you've got pedestrians coming up one seventeen to the crosswalk. But at the same time, you've got cars pulling out into that pedestrian area and then sort of merging back with one seventeen right as they're trying to make their.
Yeah, the, this.
Their their way across one seventeen, I I think in the temporary and in the permanent situation, you've got a real conflict.
This blue line is really meant to be a pedestrian walkway, not not any, you know, pass around for vehicles. My recommendation is to have one lane here that's probably thirteen feet, uh, in width. Uh, so that it's just one lane, I agree with you in terms of the striping on this side, have a a nice solid stripe. The only thing is, I don't think there's enough room to have that stripe, a Jersey barrier and enough, enough room for someone to walk.
I don't like the Jersey barrier, I mean, at all.
Could we put guy rail for that?
What was that? Guy rail would be, you know, tougher to put in, I mean, just from a, just to this standpoint.
I've got candlesticks, so there's just a vertical thing for people to see that there's a separation between the road and the pedestrian. Candlesticks are easy to put in, you can't tell me.
You you can put those delineators in here, you certainly can do that, so you delineate between the roadway, uh, edge and where people are going to walk. And they don't take up a lot of space. They 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 offer some, right, they they don't offer protection, but they actually are a deterrent, right? Because you you see, you see them, they're orange and yellow.
I don't tell people, oh, there's something going on here.
Uh, we can do that.
I had a question for, actually, I guess Lou and also the police. You know, for whatever reason, we have this crosswalk in the widest possible area in this entire, um, system. So we have this extended conflict here. And at a four thirty, at this time of year, at four thirty, and we have police out there and it's now dark. The problem I see is that, I don't know where you're gonna station the officer, probably here. How is, how are these people going to see, there's a pedestrian in the middle there, how are we gonna, um, resolve that conflict? How are we gonna protect a pedestrian who might be in the crosswalk? Uh, when these people are up here traveling and they don't even necessarily see you and your and your guy down here. It's a very, I mean, that's extraordinarily wide, that's that's like going across the old roundabout that we had going across it, uh, uh, across the di- diameter.
I'd like, I'd like to add to your comments because I think you're absolutely right about that. When this site opens, Whole Foods and the extra retail that's being asked for up to a hundred thousand square feet. Kids now cross that to go to school and actually, they don't wanna go to school. But when this opens, they are going to want to cross the street to go to. I always had to have a place to hang out when I was a teenager, I can see this being a place to hang out, going, even going to the fitness club. So, and that's not going to be during normal school hours, that's going to be seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night, during the winter, nine o'clock at night. So I'm concerned not about everything you just said. I'm also concerned about the end condition here, we're at a hundred twenty thousand square feet, there's a coffee house there somewhere, whatever it might be, which is another hangout for kids. And is there, shouldn't there actually be a walk phase in the in the light cycle? It's it's a button operated one, and shouldn't this intersection be be lighted for that, lit for that?
Uh, the intersection should be lit, it it really doesn't have to be lit if you have pedestrian signal heads and push buttons, right? So in in the final plan, it does have pedestrian signal heads, these green triangles. Uh, are basically pedestrian, uh, signal heads that, and a button. You could have a temper, you can install a temporary push button and signal heads that are wired back to the controller, which. The traffic signal controller sits in this corner over here, but you could definitely wire it back. This is something that we put on, I put on the plan because I think this is something that the developer can do and install. It's not going to happen next week, but in two or three weeks, it could be installed and put in. And again, it goes back to, we're we're building up, um, you know, the safety at the intersection, so I think.
So what about the the the, what about the lighting also, is it possible to to light this intersection?
I think they have temporary lighting, uh, for during during construction, they could have temporary lighting. Especially until they put in the temporary signal heads, uh, pedestrian signal heads, they could put in lighting for the crosswalk.
I think it's critical, because that that question.
What's the point of a crosswalk if it's not safe?
Exactly, and I think the issue that we have here today is that, we know that we could do certain things that will be okay, but I think. What we're doing here today is making sure we can have as much, you know, have as many bootstraps as possible. And go overboard if necessary because we're introducing a very different situation here.
And if they're gonna have the temporary lights, you need to make sure that there's an extension of those powers. Do you know what I'm saying, are there temporary lights that are to run from dusk till dawn? You know, what are the condition of operation of the temporary lights?
If we're talking about just illumination, yeah, you you could actually have that to shut off at whatever time that the board, uh, wants to do that, probably. You know, eight o'clock or whenever we think that there's really no pedestrian activity, right?
And can they be angled in a way too that's gonna not affect all those residents?
And and not to be. Right, so it doesn't affect residents, right.
And and it does not affect driver visibility, right, okay, so so lighting is a is an issue that needs to be quantified very carefully.
It's a shielded streetlight.
Well, but again, they're gonna be putting in a temporary condition and so we wanna make sure that whatever temporary condition isn't one of those big old spotlights.
What's the permanent condition? No lighting?
I I don't think there's any additional lighting.
Correct, in the permanent condition.
Well, how did that slip through? It seems to me that that if we're gonna put it up temporary, why, why are we taking it down? Let's just, let's just build it and leave it.
There really doesn't need, there's a certain amount of for candles or lighting illumination that you need for an intersection like this, especially if you have. Um, pedestrian signals so that it doesn't have to be led for a pedestrian because they're going through there. And it probably meets those minimum, uh, requirements.
We should double check that.
If you want something that's a little bit brighter but not too bright.
Yeah, we should so double check that because it should feel like there's a psychological impact when you come into like what I call the four corners, this is a three corners. But when you come into the four corners, you say, oh, I'm in a place that, you know.
Slow down.
Right, slow down, and right now, on this road, even coming home with this construction zone, because I come home at eleven thirty at night, it is pitch black.
Right, right.
Pitch black, and you know, I am, even even though I know where's the Chapel Creek Crossing sign and I'm gonna take a right on Roaring Brook Road. Sometimes it even comes up on me a little fast going thirty-five miles an hour, I'm like, oh, I'm here. So I do think that, um, you know, regardless, it should feel like a sense of place where, you know. Traffic is is exchanging in a direction, and I don't think we have that as it stands.
Should we have, again, getting back to this, should we have at least temporarily some sort of a safe haven, some sort of island for pedestrians because it's so extraordinarily long? Take it out afterwards, but somewhere, if someone's caught out there and someone's making these right, these people make these right hand turns at thirty miles an hour, that's what they do. So, you know, there has to be someplace for someone who's ever gonna be caught out there, I think, to to be safe, whether it's a permanent thing or not, but temporarily at least.
Let's just spend a minute just talking about how the signal operates in terms of phasing, right? So the northbound and the northbound left turn arrow start, southbound is not moving, right? They have red, right now, this is the way that it works, right? And that goes for about thirty seconds and then the southbound movement can go. And the northbound continues and the northbound left is permitted, it's not protected, right? So they can go if there's a gap in traffic.
But there is, uh, right on red.
There is right on red now.
If the person who, the people in front are going down Roaring Brook Road.
Yep.
They're going.
Yeah.
So we have this automatic conflict right now with the rights going down and the lefts going, we have it now.
So, a- as far as the pedestrian crossing is concerned, if we have the no turn on red that's here. That that allows for when, when northbound and southbound are red. Really you have people coming from Roaring Brook Road and they're supposed to stop for these pedestrians in the crosswalk. That that is the normal operation of any signal. And it it it, this no turn on red offers that protection of, they shouldn't be turning red, right? When, uh, these people are are able to to cross the intersection. And the people that are coming down Roaring Brook Road have to really yield to them. I I would not recommend having people out in the middle here.
Oh, I don't want them there, I'm just in case they're caught out there.
Yeah, only, I I, yeah, I'd I'd want them to get over there as soon as they can. Especially if we're going to, you know, take part of this so that we can have more of an alignment, then there's really not much area there to have.
And with only one movement, then the pedestrian only has to look at one set of cars moving, that's the main thing.
Right, right, so when you're crossing, you're only looking at Roaring Brook Road.
There's a problem here in that the northbound traffic has a green light while the southbound has a red light. And the pedestrians at that crosswalk looking at that red light, thinking the southbound, the northbound traffic's gonna stop and has a green light. It's it's, I don't see how you make that safe, but there's, there's a lot of new people getting off that bus, they're employees, they don't know that that goes that way. They're gonna see that red light, they think it's safe and traffic doesn't work.
Did you say that again?
There's a, there's a green light at that intersection for northbound, for thirty seconds, they have a green light, well, it's still red all the time.
Well, the southbound is still red.
So they can make left turns, they do.
But I think, I think the new, the temporary, my understanding was correctly, correct, the our recommendation would be the temporary pedestrian light.
Northbound turns green before southbound.
Which shut off both northbound and southbound.
That's right.
So they would be, it would be a permanent red, north and south.
But the concern I have is that we're all.
But making a left, uh, I'm sorry, one second, if you made it a green left turn lane only right there, it doesn't, right now it turns green. Like thirty seconds before and you can go straight or left, but if it was just left, then you're not impacting the people who are crossing the crosswalk. But it's still, the rea- the only reason it turns green first is so people can make the left turn.
That's right.
Not, so they can go straight.
It's an advanced green, right.
So if it was just left turn, then it's not impacting the people on the crosswalk, but it's still letting people make that left.
The only issue that might be is is that's an old signal, so I'm not sure if it'll be capable, maybe, maybe you do.
Can I?
Well, there's one other question I had first on this, on this signal thing.
I have a Jeremy question.
The other issue is this, we're all creatures of habit. And I can tell you, we went through this in Pleasantville in that very strange intersection there. Where for years we had, you know, no turn on red and people were still making reds because that was habit. We're all creatures of habit, people have been making that right hand turn here without looking and we're gonna have a sign up there, says no turn on red. It's not because we're not law abiding, it's just because we're creatures of habit, people are gonna continue to go through that and I'm really concerned with that in terms of safety for the pedestrians, the traffic officer. And of course, all these conflicts that we're introducing here. So I don't, I don't know what the resolution is, but I'm I'm really concerned with that because we have a crosswalk here, it's like the Tappan Zee Bridge, we made it at the widest part of the river. This is the widest possible place we can have a crosswalk.
And and so.
So let me interject for a moment, I need to interject Jeremy's, Jeremy has a question. He he wa- he's raising the issue of Whopper Will and, you know, kind of whether or not there are any plans or any temporary devices. Elect monies for electronic signage or controls that could be helpful here but also helpful at Whopper Will. And then he he's also asking, how long is it safe to have a potential jug handle issue on the road? And is the, and are the amount of cars that are going through here relevant in relation to what is being discussed? You know, he said, is what, is there a difference between fifty cars a day or a hundred cars a day? Do we have a sense in of of the numbers?
I mean, I think we should kind of put in in the Whopper Will discussion, it's not really in this area, I mean, it's da- it's dangerous, it's around a curve. People are coming around the curve, but I think the issue, like, to be honest, some of Greenfield should not. Whether we're granting a TCO should not have anything to do with Whopper Will.
He's also saying anywhere Cowden, Annandale, anywhere that's in proximity here.
Felix has already started the process of looking at Whopper Will, there's already been some sideline studies, he's committed to doing that. Now, I'm not saying that's, he'll continue to do that depending on what happens, but he, right now, he's committed to doing that and, you know, and he started that process.
So the question of the traffic light that the chief and the lieutenant.
Yes, alright, so two two things, one is, uh, again, I'm late in the game, so I'm not sure why the crosswalk was placed on this side. I think it, it has to connect to some sidewalk, right, on that side.
There's a lot of, yeah, yeah.
And if there's no walkway on the south, on the other side, then that's the reason it's timed inside.
Yeah, there's nowhere even to walk on the other side.
Hey, what's the, uh, this is another Jeremy question that he's not asking you now, he raised it the other day. Why can't we have two lanes at the top of Roaring Brook Road over there?
Yeah, she doesn't ride enough, I drove it.
Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that, um, we're gonna come back to that, let me just.
People do it now.
Can I ask a crosswalk question before we go off crosswalks? I could, I completely understand that the sidewalk is here and that's why we have that meeting point. Um, did that, did we ever consider that? This is going this way to go to the sidewalk?
Two crossings is is not as good as just one crossing and.
Cross here and then cross there? But they are shorter, that's why, that's always why I suggested.
The overall is the longer though, and and so here, here's the thing. We we like to place crosswalks where people cross, and so if someone's off, getting off the bus here and they just go right across, I I really don't want that to happen.
Oh, I'm not suggesting diagonally.
No, I agree, so the the way that, um, the way that this signal should work is that if these buttons are pushed, everything is red. Not, nothing goes, so Roaring Brook doesn't go, no one goes, everyone is there if you push the button.
Right, that's the solution.
So.
If you push the button, if you don't push the button.
Alright, one of, I think, one of the things that was raised, I think back when someone talked about it at the end of the table. Is that this is an old light, not a new light?
Yeah.
And it may not have the underlying technology to support that, so one of the questions I have. Is can an upgrade be done to the light to make that one of the conditions?
We are getting into light there.
In the temp, in this temporary condition with the existing controller, yes, the additional, uh, temporary push buttons could operate with the existing controller that's out there.
In temporary condition. With all red.
Yes.
Let me, let me interject.
That one's easy to do.
Is that the one that you said would take two to three weeks to implement?
Yeah, you have to, you have to purch- I mean, you have to rent the equipment for an extended period of time, it has to be placed, it's all temporary, it's all mobile. There's no fixed objects there.
You're essentially adding another phase to the light cycle, does the state get involved because it interrupts their their traffic flow?
Well, it's the same thing as having an officer out there, but it's it's something that's.
Well, just, yes or no, does the state, you think it's just.
They would not have to get involved in this, no, because it's still an empty plan.
And one of the things that, it would be part of the permanent plan.
Yeah, it should.
Yes, it should be part of the permanent plan.
So would the state get involved at that point?
Permanent, the permanent plan has a pedestrian only fi- uh, phase in it.
All red?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let me just say real quick, the chief I know, we've been looking at throughout town, having these pedestrian beacons, whatever they're called, those signs that flash.
Right.
When pedestrians are crossing, when you press that light, the pedestrian lights, things will flash, and I know they're not cheap, but we can get them to pay for it.
You can't put them at a signalized intersection.
You can't put it at a signalized intersection.
Got it.
Okay, can I ask more stuff, could we put a sign up there for pedestrians before that light goes up? Um, extended green or something like, just to let them know that.
Yes.
Just like a pedestrian sign of some sort, let them know.
I think we could do that, and just to button up this right turn, no turn on red. Uh, my suggestion is to put up a very large no turn on red right at the corner here. That's more than just a regular no turn on red that you don't. That's more than just a regular no turn on red that you don't.
And it's just gonna be an officer there usually.
Forty-six by forty-six inches, the largest sign we can have. And you could do that, again, in a construction area, you could have very large signs.
Yeah, do it, I think that's a great idea, then you put the little one, I, you know, the ones that work most are the right-hand on the ground sign and then the hanging sign with the big red thing. People get that after a while. And everybody, please don't keep in mind that this is, I don't believe this is a thirty-second, you know, green only. Cause I count the cars, cause sometimes I'm frustrated and I've never gotten past about eight thousand when I count. So that's eight seconds, I'd say it's maybe ten to twelve seconds. So I don't think it's as big of an issue as.
Yeah, it's not thirty, but it's.
Yeah.
So with the no turn on red, we we could put our message board up there for a while too, but new condition, no turn on red.
Does that light have the ability to have a red arrow that just has a red arrow up? So people see the red arrow and they all know you can't turn on a red arrow.
Uh, that would be a little bit more complicated.
Oh, okay.
Because now it's a guide wire, we wouldn't be able to put up more signal heads for that right turn.
Why, why would you not be?
In in the, in the final condition, there is a no, there is a right turn arrow, right, southbound.
So it's a, so let's say you don't want them to make a right turn, would it be red, red? And only when they can make right, it would be red.
If you're talking about a right turn arrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be a red arrow and a red ball. Right, so the southbound uh through has the red ball and the right turn has the red arrow that would turn green when you can go.
But wouldn't it be more logical to have it red, red and then a green arrow when they can turn right?
Yeah, there's a green arrow when they can turn right and there's a green ball for everyone else to turn right. So I mean, part of the plan in the future is that when Roaring Brook Road is going, right? You're going to allow for this southbound right turn to go because there's no conflict and you get to service them. It's trying to service all the movements at the same time. And I would agree with uh the developers, traffic engineer, that the signal itself would operate better in the future than it does today, it would.
So we're looking at, obviously, we're 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 all here because of time constraints. Summarizing all the things that we've talked about in terms of how we would enhance this on a temporary basis, what are we talking about in terms of timing and having these things in place, approved, done, whatever, rented, uh, what happens? Where are, is it three weeks, is it two weeks, is it four days, is it, you know, what, where are we?
Wrong submitted, wrong submitted.
So I mean, if you want, if you, if you're going to go back to the poles don't come out, right?
And reviewed.
If this is kind of the worst-case scenario, the poles don't come out, Jersey barrier, you know, they can get in a day and place out here, I don't think that's an issue and they, and they basically um affix them into the pavement. Um, the striping that would happen, that I think that they can do that also pretty quickly. Uh, and having no left turn, aligning the southbound approach. Um, they could probably pour a a pad here and have the delineators that we talked about installed along this area so that there is some, you know, area that people are are walking. That that's within a week to two weeks tops, right? I think the the connection for these pedestrian signal heads, let's say that's a month out, just the timing of getting it, um, get getting the equipment, putting it out there and having an electrician basically connecting it back to the cabinet. I would say that's anywhere from three to four weeks. And in the meantime, you know, you basically have the no turn on red signs, a lot of it signing, which again, they can get done within a week. Um, and and stri- striping out the crosswalk, I think you can still do, uh, because you have police presence that's out there and it's in advance of having pedestrian signal heads come up and and again, as the chief pointed out, you can have signing that, you know, directs people that are over there. So for the most part, these are things that the contractor uh can do. It probably can't be, you know, on Tuesday, but probably by next weekend, most of this could be in place, yeah.
With the exception of the pedestrian crossing signs.
Right.
Which is perhaps one of the most critical.
A m- a month, yeah.
But we could still get a.
We have officers during this time, we have the police there, we're gonna have.
And if we're going for this existing condition to go into the condition where the poles are removed, what is, I mean, given what we know now that Con Ed's coming in every once in a while, how far out are we from actually having the poles removed?
And then being able to, yeah, bother all of these out together.
Yeah, that that I don't, that I don't know of, you know, what's the time period of having the poles removed and then we have to make a change? I mean, the only change really that happens is now you have additional, you have additional width that's here, right?
It's wider and safer. Yeah, it's safer.
Not even the crosswalk because that stays the same, it's really just this. And you know, I, if we're, if we're not going to do the left turn bay and just having a through movement, all of this really can be striped out in the final condition without the poles.
Yeah, and I think, and that's, I think that's great, and I think that's a good way to move forward.
Right, yeah, that's good.
And the other good news is that out of this month that it might take to get the temporary um push buttons, ten days is gonna be holidays, so the kids won't be there. We're gonna have a cop, we're gonna have officers there, which we don't, which we don't have now.
And I did notice with the car there today, people were driving slower.
People behave better when we're around them.
Yes.
So even having the officer there.
Yeah, makes it different. Yeah, and let me just say one, two other things, I have two other things.
You just have to, have to check and make sure it's not a key card.
First, if we put up a temporary pedestrian signals.
We put officers there.
Quiet, quiet, please.
Guys, I actually would like to get out on time, like in kind of a tight fashion.
Bob, Bob.
I only have like fifteen more minutes here.
Quiet, please, quiet, please.
If we put these temporary pedestrian signals in, I would like just to let Summit Greenfield know and I, we may decide those work really well and we wanna keep them. That's not in the final, I don't think.
They are part of the final plan, yes.
They are, okay, good. And then the other thing which I don't see on here, it's not totally related to this exact intersection, but one thing I'm noticing just being there a lot is we really need, and I know it's a DOT road, but we really need like cross hatching on the road in front of Chapico Crossing, in front of the entrance, like a little further north, right where the entrance is? Because ev- everyone, yeah, right there, because everyone blocks that that entrance and exit into the site. And um if anyone's, that's gonna be a main thoroughfare, obviously, in and out of the site. So if anyone's coming out and wants to make a left or even a right into there, a left turn in or a left turn out, really, it's it's impossible because it gets blocked completely, if every once in a while you'll get someone who goes, oh, I shouldn't block that. But the hatching would really make a big difference.
So uh, uh, before, I'm sorry, before, if I may, Lisa, before we get. I agree, I agree with that, but can we go back, can we go back to the, to the uh Roaring Brook Road intersection? Let me ask about the left, the the northbound left that we're talking about eliminating as an option. I was looking at the, at the traffic numbers uh the other night that are representative on the sheet here, need many sheets here.
Yep.
And there's a lot more information on here than a normal person needs to know.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, there are like five things you need to know and there are like a hundred, but that's, that's, that's just the way traffic engineers do it, which is fine. But I think I picked out.
It's not really, but it's.
Louis is an architect, he can't control himself.
Yeah, that was, that was not, that was not an issue, I'm sorry. Yes, actually, it was.
So we're getting to the bottom of this.
Exactly.
So if I, if I, if I pick out what I think are the numbers that we care about, I may be misinterpreting them, but if you compare the existing LOS's level of service with the build, and this is, I think, information out of the original EIS, right? If you, if you, if you don't do the left hand, northbound left hand, right? Eastbound, westbound, if you don't do that, that northbound move goes from a s- a C in the existing to an F.
Right, in the full build.
In in the full build, but but the full build that is being, the build that's being asked for is only twenty thousand square feet less than the full build, so.
Right.
And I think people are saying, you know, the biggest impact's gonna be Whole Foods anyway, so cause a lot of the trips that are for the other twenty thousand square feet are people are shopping at Whole Foods and then going to these. So I think it's the Whole Foods forty thousand square feet, which is probably causing the bulk of the traffic here.
Right.
So are we willing to accept for the six-month period or whatever it might be, and people are saying six months, but there is no guarantee of that? We've heard lots of dates from this applicant over the period of like four or five years and the dates always seem to move on us. So I'd like to take the six-month sort of window and just put that aside and assume that we don't know how long we're gonna be moving this way. Are we willing to live with this intersection at a level F without that left turn uh for, I don't know, six months, eight months, we don't know how long?
I'll I'll tell you this, that if the future condition for the left turn is based on a left turn bay, you know, they can hold probably six or seven or maybe even nine vehicles in the striping that's further south. And and that's definitely a benefit to the intersection. If only having two or three that are he- that's here, uh, it really, it might work on paper, but it really won't work in in reality. In reality, this intersection's going to fail uh for the first two months that this is open. Regardless, because people are going to be here, but the intersection, you want, you want it to have a level service that's failing only so that you can control the speed and the movements at the intersection because it's a, it's a construction area. I'd rather have them moving slower um and sacrifice some delay than having them move fast through the intersection and not being in control of it.
So I I, okay, but if you could, the only, during actual construction activity, there are flagmen out there, there's all that, so that's not an issue, I don't think. It's during that period of, we're done doing phase one construction, we're still still calling it a a construction site and six months down the road, we're gonna be back. So this is not, this is.
I think you have police, you you should have the ability for the police to be there for the entire six months or year or whatever they feel that's necessary to safely control the intersection.
And you're saying the way, the way.
Don't we, don't we have mechanisms to force them to have this done by six months? I mean, why are we contemplating it going on for a year?
I don't know.
To that question.
I have another comment. No, it gets renewed after, uh.
Right, we, we're not gonna revoke the TCO once Whole Foods is open.
No, no, but it gets renewed.
I mean, this is really when, this is a conversation about when Whole Foods opens and when safety is met so that we feel that
We're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Not just members of our community, members from like, call it a twenty-five mile radius are safe.
I have, I have a comment here on on this, I think, that what really makes the full blue, light blue, left-hand turn lane functional, as Louis is hoping and suggesting it will be in the final version, that really is dependent upon two things, the construction of the retaining wall and paving.
Right.
And that, the paving will be operational by April fifteenth or no, no later, it might be as early as April Fool's Day, but you know how that works. And so I think that four months from now, it's relatively certain that this intersection will be in really good shape.
Exactly.
I think so too.
There's three stages here, we got the poles, we got the out to the light blue started off, and we got the, they're gonna do this stuff in the spring, they just can't do it now because of the weather, this is not a lot of work that's left.
I I I would disagree, I think in four months, this this intersection's gonna be in horrible shape.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah, me too.
What?
I agree, I think it's good, it's just.
I think the next phase, when they actually start doing the wall, we're we're definitely losing, I I think it's the interruption is gonna be, I mean, I don't know about safety, but from the standpoint of function and aggravation, I think it's gonna be much worse.
I thought, I thought.
And we're gonna have a place open at that point too.
Yeah, you're going to have to remove the left turn lane anyways and do that construction.
Oh, definitely, definitely that.
And the question, does it?
But I think it's gonna be much worse at that point.
Does it make a difference if we ask Whole Foods to like not open until, let's say, nine o'clock? After all, at least the school traffic is done.
Oh, nine PM or nine AM?
No, AM.
Uh, I don't think, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the morning, I mean, I'll I'll defer to Lieutenant, but I don't, I don't think the morning is the problem.
PM, yeah, that would make a big difference probably.
I think it's the PM peak that's the problem. And I don't, I don't know how you not have them open after three PM.
No, I don't think we could close it till PM, but I'm wondering if it makes sense on the morning.
And they're gonna argue.
Because that's what people wanna go there, right? And that's why we're.
They're gonna argue for the dinner crowd, they're they're probably rather have to close, open at twelve and do six.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying close it at, in the afternoon, that I think's impossible, but I was thinking maybe they don't open super early because there is a lot of traffic, at least on Roaring Brook Road and coming up North Salt Mill that way.
And I don't even know what their planned time of opening and closing is.
Eight early.
I don't think many people are there at eight, I'm sorry.
Luke, so if, if we're in a scenario where the poles have not been, that have not come out of the road, um, and we hope that they may early next week, um, do you believe that eliminating the left-hand turn lane and having the Jersey barriers and the poles flush with the Jersey barriers is a plan that's safe and you would support?
Yes.
So can I add one thing to that, though? So right now, we're talking about Whole Foods, but I think we can anticipate that in a few weeks' time, Lifetime is up against its own deadlines, they're selling, we've heard in the past that they're selling memberships and all of things, you know, right?
Okay, definitely, certainly.
And so, but they haven't told them when they're open, unlike.
Right, but I think we could anticipate that in a couple or three weeks, we're gonna hear that Lifetime is up against its own deadline for opening.
Yes.
And so, and so is all of this with the, with the, with the temporary lighting for the, for the pedestrians and all of this, how does this work for safety with with Lifetime Fitness added to the picture?
Let me, let me make a suggestion on that because I was gonna say that too. My suggestion is, I know Felix is not gonna wanna hear this, my suggestion is that Lifetime should not open until we get those poles out of the road and all these other things are are there, you know, this, all these lights and whatever things we're talking about, that gives them three weeks to do it. Lifetime wants to open January first, that's when everybody makes their new year, new year, new year resolutions, that's a big time for them. And that'll hold the fire, that'll keep the fire under them to 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 get this, to get all this stuff done.
But I agree with that, they should not open until the poles are gone.
We may get the poles, we may get the poles out this week, but we can't count on that, but Lifetime, that gives them three weeks, and if they can't get the poles out in three weeks, that's sorry, that's too bad.
But what I would like you to opine on is whether all of these measures, we've been talking about it as forty thousand square feet of Whole Foods, but let's talk about it as eighty thousand square feet of Whole Foods and Lifetime Fitness.
But Lifetime Fitness, assuming the poles are down?
No, no, I mean, the basically.
No, but we're saying, if we say you can't open the gym until the poles are down.
I think the poles should be, I, to your point, I think the poles should be down regardless before anything happens.
Right, I agree.
I mean, the poles are a huge impediment, but I'm talking about, you know, we're talking about the temporary function, less than ideal for forty thousand square feet, but two, three weeks down the line, we can anticipate that the ask is gonna come to add in Lifetime Fitness. So really, we should be talking about this as, and those are the two biggest drivers of traffic, I would imagine, you know? We should be talking about this as eighty thousand square feet with the two major tenants, the two biggest drivers of traffic, so can you opine on how safe it is, whether it's safe with eighty thousand square feet?
I guess, well, superimpose upon that the conditions that the supervisor just said.
Yeah, cause I'm not saying that.
That's what I think.
Full compliance with the NPT as revised after this meeting and what would the the impact, the full implementation of that when Lifetime opens?
Right, cause he's talking about three stages, he's talking about three stages, right.
With no poles.
Yeah, no fault, that's, that's all of the conditions.
No poles. He's talking about three stages, so the first stage is only with Whole Foods, the second stage, when the poles are gone, then you have Whole Foods and Lifetime open. And then the third stage comes in the spring when uh they have to do the work uh by the, in the right of way of the Lewis property.
Alright, you ready?
See, you got it, there you go.
You can add, you can add before I go. I think from a safety standpoint, this would be a a safe operating condition for forty, the 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 one that we've been talking about, right?
With the no poles, all stop things.
For, for, no, no poles, so so let me go back, with, even without, even knowing that the pedestrian, temporary pedestrian signal heads will be coming in, this is safe for forty thousand or for the eighty thousand from a safety standpoint. I think the key thing, and I think I've been saying this all along, is that you you cannot open up anything else until January and until you have data and see how it's going. We might be in a position January first and say, this isn't so bad, we could probably uh open up more, or we cannot. And so I think it might not be January first, it might be January fifteenth, but it is a wait and see how this goes and get data uh along the way. Because I would like to know uh from when this starts to open, how many vehicles are really going compared to what they um, what they projected?
Right.
Uh, because things, obviously, if something's brand new, it might, for the first month, it might be very busy. It's a very busy time of the year for a place like Whole Foods. So we would wanna do counts, you know, once a week, um, manual counts at the intersection in addition to the automatic traffic recorders that we have down already on one seventeen and we're collecting data. And we'd like to put another one down on Roaring Brook Road. So I think it's safe uh to operate whether it's Whole Foods and the gym, uh, but I would, I would not open up the gym until we have data and we make it, and you guys have the information to make a determination that that is okay to do.
So if I can add to that, uh, first of all, Bob, you have a a really good piece you wrote uh the other night, which I think was very helpful to my thinking.
With Dick's help, by the way.
With Dick's help, yes. Oh, it's actually more help than that, I got contributions from everybody.
Okay.
So um, I agree with the, with lots of caveats, assuming everything else works out. The phased approach, which starts at forty thousand square feet, not eighty, forty thousand square feet gets locked in. And if it's okay, then we can, we can approve another TCO or another phase of the TCO.
I'm okay.
For the other forty. Uh, because, and I think this is what's gonna happen, I think. And I I talked about this the other day. The Chico's opened up in Millwood and the parking lot was a nightmare and so on and so forth. The Chico's really has a relatively small draw. And because there isn't a Whole Foods over here, I think there are people going over there, but Whole Foods is a national, big box retailer with a sub-regional draw. There are gonna be people coming from everywhere, distant, to come to this location. And we don't have any idea whether the numbers that are in here reflect that, especially during the first month. I mean, this place could be a nightmare. And so, I would say forty thousand square feet first. But you talked about safety, state, safety, I'm still concerned about the level of service of all of this.
But the level of service and safety are really two different things.
I know, I know, I know, I'm talking about level of service.
They are, right.
Yeah, because the whole level of service is safer.
Well, well, can I.
Because, let me, let me see if I can just say the reason I'm worried about it. We've sat through many meetings in the beginning of this project during the EIS phase, when when the neighbors would come, the town people would come, and they say the traffic is awful, how can you improve this? We went through all the studies to say that, yes, it will work. The folks are coming back and saying, you know, the traffic is even worse now than it used to be. Everybody is their own traffic expert.
Yes, that is true, it would, it makes my job a little bit more difficult, but it's okay.
But there's also, there's construction.
No, but let me, I'm sorry, please, let me finish, let me just finish, okay? So, I think I'm a traffic expert, I just, I just happen to know a little bit more about it, just a little bit more than most folks. And I realize that my perception of traffic is only what I see behind the wheel of my car.
Right.
There's lots of other stuff going on, other people behind the wheels of their car.
I have a.
That 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 doesn't affect, that perception does not affect. The the facts of this don't, don't necessarily drive our decision. If if we are living with a level of service F through the first and and worse potentially because of this opening. Through the Christmas season, on this intersection, the phones are gonna be ringing off the hook. The next time we go to a public meeting, people are, I believe, people are gonna come in and they're gonna be furious, and they would be right. To be furious because we allowed an opening of Whole Foods at their expense. And there's no reason, from their perspective, we couldn't wait till everything was done.
But Tom, there's 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 safety benefits that are gonna be instituted that's gonna make it safer for people. And I also think that people are gonna, you know, people, if you know that it's it's bad there by five o'clock, you're not gonna go there by five o'clock. And we have that problem with the Chico's. People stay away from certain, certain intersections at certain times knowing that it's not great. And this 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 market also has delivery options, where people can just deliver food. So I think people are gonna, people are going to adapt to it, even if it is, the traffic counts are higher than we think, I think people just. Get used to it and they're gonna, they're gonna change.
This is it right now, right, southbound at Allen, through Allendale and then also northbound is pretty, pretty slow. Pretty, you know, the level of service is going to suffer during construction anyway.
I've got, I've got a, I've got a wait time here, what is it, something like two hundred and something seconds?
Yeah.
On that northbound route, right?
Yeah.
That's for the build condition.
Right.
That's, that's like three minutes, and how many phases or cycles does one have to wait to get through there?
And I think it's a hundred and ten seconds or something like that, the cycle, the entire segment.
Right. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be worse than that, and 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 I think it's gonna be worse than that. Rob, it didn't affect what happened over at the Chico's, people came anyway. They came anyway, even though they couldn't find a place to park, they came.
Parking across the street. Hey, can I, I have one, can I just say one quick thing, cause I need to leave.
But it all, but it all worked out.
Well, yeah.
Just really quick, cuz I I have, I have a meeting, I'm sorry, I have to make. I had two thoughts, the first was, I liked, Rob had also had a suggestion that we tell Summit Greenfield that they cannot rent any more office. Um, and aside from keeping the retail limiting that, to say they have to leave it at, I think, the fifty percent that it is now until everything's done.
And make sure it's less than fifty percent, whatever it is.
Or whatever it is now, it can't go anymore. And then I just wanted to think, is, would it make any sense to actually close? To other than trucks, the main entrance on one seventeen as an entrance into Chapel Creek Crossing during this time period?
To to close all the other access points?
It's just a thought, there are two other entrances into the site.
One.
Does it, not, that trucks can't go on, trucks have to go through one seventeen. But would it make any sense at all during this construction? To say if you're going to Whole Foods, you cannot come in off of one seventeen, would that do anything to eliminate or moving the traffic?
Yeah.
I don't know if it would, and it may make Roaring Brook Road worse, but. Let me build on Lisa's question, because I have, I have a, I have the opposite question. If what ends up happening is, if you're heading southbound on one seventeen. That the, a Whole Foods, enter for Whole Foods here goes off of one seventeen, so all the southbound traffic.
Right, then southbound traffic can go through this access point here.
Go through what's already constructed and already built, and that would alleviate the choke traffic that ends up hitting the choke point.
Coming down.
Okay, and then I have one other question.
Yeah, and if there's additional signing, we can ask them to put additional signing, yes.
And then, and then I have one other thing. So, right now, because there's such a backup going south on one seventeen. What you're getting is people, you're backed up all the way here, right? So Kittle Road is right here, so it's backed up way past here, so you're getting people coming down here, driving in Kittle. Zooming down Annandale to come out right here, to bypass all that traffic. So is, which I've been saying forever, this happens all the time, but it's a lot worse now. Because what happens is, you end up missing all of this traffic, it bypasses, they come in here, zoom down here and come out right here. Is there anything we can do here to stop that from happening? Cause it's really dangerous walking in that whole neighborhood, and that's actually where the uh track team runs and a lot of other people.
The the only way, the only way to handle that is is really not, not down here at the intersection, but along the road.
That's what happens. I've been saying that for years.
The only way to do that is to put in, you know, speed humps and street tables.
Well, no, that's not true, you can also say no left turn out of Annandale.
Yes, but but you have, you have to be able to control.
Then people get there, then they gotta turn around and go back. We also have no enforcement ability inside Summit Greenfield to divert all the traffic in there.
Yeah, but once they figure it out.
Yeah.
But.
We don't have any enforcement ability.
Nope.
Inside Summit Greenfield, it's private roads.
Right. Oh, this is all private?
Yeah.
It's all private.
Summit, no, no, into that, that's a, I was like, Annandale.
Inside Chapel Creek Crossing.
Inside Chapel Crossing.
Oh, right, right.
Right, but to, but since, but it's in their control, it's in their control, so.
It's in. It's Summit Greenfield, so they have to approve it and it's never.
Exactly, they're asking a lot of us.
Right. Right.
They're asking us, we're making ass, and so one of our conditions should be that they have to put traffic through their own road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they wanna do it, that's what they recommended on Tuesday anyway.
That's what.
No, they're, but, no, they don't, they don't, they they don't, we need to confirm it.
This is.
If they want a TCO, they agree.
They a, they absolutely do, they absolutely one hundred percent do.
They said on Tuesday. They said they could.
And by the way, if I'm driving, if I'm driving south on on, if I'm driving south, I know perfect.
Yeah, they said. I'll go back and review it. I asked Felix about this.
If I'm driving, if I'm, if I'm, of course, if, if I'm driving south on Roaring Brook Road.
I heard it's high, please.
He said he wouldn't be happy to have it.
If I have the option to avoid the light, I'm sorry, if I'm driving south on one seventeen, and I have the option of avoiding the lights. On Roaring Brook Road, and then by the way, avoiding the lights, that's also by the high school, I'm going through Chapel Crossing.
I mean, everyone goes through there halfway.
Cause I'm gonna wrap around and come right out by the highway and boom.
Can you add signage at them saying, enter here for Whole Foods?
Wait, is that taken at one seventeen?
Yeah, on one seventeen.
Yes.
Is one of the requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Get them out of the intersection. But seriously, I'm worried about that Annandale too. You either have to make no left turn or close that entrance completely.
Okay.
And then nobody's going anywhere, and then it says no outlet and they're done.
But by, by.
Right, my issue is, um, overall, is uh, you've given us an opinion that basically this can be safe. Um, some of us around the table are not satisfied that it can be safe, and we would want to hear from you and and others. In terms of what additional steps can we do beyond just this, this intersection? Re-channeling traffic, what do we have to do, we've we've heard, by the way, we haven't spoken at all about. The the neighbors who are objecting already at Count, already at Annandale, and all that backing up. To Lisa's point, that, it's not traffic, it's gridlock, it's stopped right now in Mount Kisco Country Club, all the way up the hill, and that's where people are cutting around. It ma- makes sense, cause you save twenty minutes. But what do we, what can we do, what additional steps can we employ to make this even more safe? Absent, you know, just telling Whole Foods you can't open up, I mean, I don't think that's a realistic option.
Uh, out outside of the intersection that we've been talking about?
Everything, the whole, the whole global issue, I'm not talking about Whipplewell, but for this TCO, for the immediate area, what additional steps can be made? To make this more safe, and I come from this from the the context of what we approved in all of our deliberations. Was really the best we could do, but still frankly marginal. You know, we were given so many constraints, the applicant was was, has so many constraints. And we all did the best we could as we negotiated this thing over four, five, six years, whatever it was. So, we understand that even at full-blown proper design, we have issues and problems, it's still gonna operate at a very marginal level of efficiency. There's still some safety issues, we've heard about safety issues for years about this, and school buses and all this crossing. So we had this issue, now we're having these temporary conditions, change conditions, a truck room, emergency, all this kind of stuff. What can we do to make it even safer in your opinion?
But let me just, let me interject for a second, I wanna, I wanna update people on what they are willing to do. Things that we've talked about and they're willing to do it. A part of the approval process did include that the cross, the stone, the sidewalk, which probably have to be a crushed stone sidewalk. From Annandale to the crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
We've already contacted the homeowners, they're willing to sell the land, Summit Greenfield is willing to do that. The Cowden Lane across stone crushed path that's supposed to go from Cowden Lane to the entrance to Chapel Crossing. Was on the plans, but for some reason wasn't in the approval, they're willing to do that. Uh, Jeremy has a concern about the Whipplewell sightline, they've already started working on that. You know, and besides all the traffic use we've heard tonight with lights and cr- crosswalks and things like that. These are, I just wanna throw it out that these are things that we talked about on Tuesday night, that they are willing to do, to make this a better project, safer project.
I believe, I believe that they are, I mean, they've always been, I think, good faith, good faith negotiators with us, and I I believe that they are.
Yes.
My my, my comments about the level of service northbound. If you don't build that left-hand turn lane. Was a, was the consequence of our decision not to do it. I'm not saying that we need to not give them the TCO, but I believe we have to have the left-hand turn in order to get traffic to flow properly. Because of the analysis, the northbound move is a level B then. So, going back to the, to the decision, to the, to the idea of taking some of that zebra striping away. To get the left-hand turn to align where it should be. And the southbound to align with its pathway through the intersection. Might give us the level of service we need and resolve some of the safety, a big safety concern, I think. If you can, if if that's something you could get behind, maybe that's something we might agree to.
But I have a couple of questions about that, so. In the, you know, in the traffic studies, it was level of service B, but with a seven or eight or nine car stacking lane.
Right.
It's not gonna be a level of service B with a two or three car stacking lane. And then the other point is, is that even if you put the two or the temporary stacking lane in. When it comes time to do the permanent intersection and you're putting in the retaining wall on the west side of one seventy, you have to take that turn lane out. So people will be used to a very short turn lane, which may or may not be effective.
We'll find out whether it's.
They'll have a, a three or four, will have a three or four month period where you have this very short turn, stacked turn lane. Then you have to take it away in order to do the permanent fix to the intersection.
Right, I mean, what, the the level of service that you're talking about for that northbound left turn lane is based on the full length of the law, of the left turn bay.
I understood, I understood.
And so, if if we can't get that and we can only get two or three cars.
It goes from a B to a what?
It goes from an F to an F.
It probably goes from a B to a D, uh, it's better than.
An F.
Better, yes, it is better than an F.
Cause there's, there's nothing worse than an F, there's lots of them.
But, but, but again, we go back to, you know, the difference between level of service and safety. I think from a safety operation, it's better to have no left turn uh lane if it's only going to be two or three vehicles. Than it is to have them.
I don't, I guess, I got it.
Rob.
So I, the question, can this be extended?
The suggestion, you understand that.
Can, do we have rights to that property, is it DOT property, Bob, Sabrina? You know, they paved.
There's not enough room to do that, because of the retain, because of the grade, because of the grade, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we do have a left turn.
Because of the grade, yeah.
Yeah, while we were.
I I have a question.
So they paved this area here.
I'm gonna go back to.
But a month is gonna be the worst.
Done.
I understand that's the worst.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say.
Now we're up and down.
The beautiful, the good thing is that he's actually using this period to compile evidence, we have our police that are actually there, who also providing this.
Going with the northbound, right.
And actually, it's something that's never been mentioned to tonight, but it's actually been an experiment with them.
This southbound, they paved, took it about here to extend, you know, the the fault was this left in turn.
Yes.
Do we have the ability to continue that, so so that we can, with that temporary shoulder, that we, I mean, they're not doing a drainage correctly or anything else at this point?
No, only because at that point, there's a grade that becomes too significant to actually put down pavement. Right, so.
I don't think so, it's 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 a ditch basically, it's a drainage ditch along the entire uh western side of Route one seventeen.
Right, but but on this side, you see this side, I'm I'm just sorry, you see the side, how it grades up?
Yeah.
So at some point, you can extend the pavement, but at at some point here, you're not going to be able to do that, because it's a one and two grade.
Yeah. I understand, but. Can, marginally, can we step it to some level, do we have a right to, can we too, I don't know if.
If you wanna extend the, going south, extend the left turn lane?
Exactly.
Right now, we measured into the field, we got one seventy-four, and they came to some of the structure. Uh, I think it was like drainage issues they had going through the south.
Well, the whole thing is a grade issue.
I do have a question for you.
And they stopped there for some reason, so.
Um, you guys, so if you're gonna, there's a powwow going on there, which I feel very uncomfortable.
But they continue that. He said, have this guy, it's safer to have people go slow.
Well, I was gonna actually ask you a question, so realistically speaking. You know, we want to have a, that's a life of service within a short time frame. But we're now holding until Lifetime Fitness.
Right.
Uh, we want the poles removed before Lifetime Fitness. But in order for you to get drawings back from them, with the adjustments made to this plan, lighting, all of the stuff, and that. Not just the one that's gonna happen for Whole Foods, but the one that happens for Whole Foods, plus the one that happens for the, let's call it the Lifetime Fitness scenario. Realistically speaking, is that gonna happen by Tuesday?
It's gonna happen by Tuesday.
I I think the first part of it can happen by Tuesday, the second part probably can't, there's probably just not enough time for that.
What's the second part, sorry?
That's the poles removed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I I think they can, they could modify the plan for what we've been talking about. Even, I mean, even this plan, but the plan with the poles that are in place. They can modify and put a plan together for this with the lineaters on this side and the striping and all of that, and they could put on the plan.
Including lighting.
Including lighting and the temporary uh push buttons and the and pedestrian signals that will take some time to get, they could prepare a plan like that.
Well, sure, you've done it for them.
Yes, they could take that and put it on.
Okay.
But they have to, they have to, we have to see how they interpret.
And then, but it needs to be reviewed. Right.
And remember, they have to draw, their engineer has to stamp it, because it's going to state, so he's live.
But and I mean, they need to review it, so to me, the question real is, if they can deliver this to you by Tuesday, we then need to review it.
Yeah, we would want it, you know, Monday afternoon, Monday by one o'clock.
Yeah, but we don't care about their timing.
Okay, and then I just have one other question for you, cuz I I'm the one with the plans in place. Make, I'm still super, I just, I'm very.
But you said you think it's okay.
I, I'm, I'm okay with the pole.
But I, no, but I'd like to really understand the difference between, from a safety perspective. And the additional steps that we put in for phase two, like, are we talking like uh twenty percent? I'm not, you don't wanna put a number on it, let's say it goes from being safe enough to be for you guys to back it. to one that you feel like, or call it on a comfort scale. I don't care how you define it. But, to me, the no pole plan with all of the other stuff going in, it's, it just feels like you're doing the right things.
Yeah, because you have more room on that southbound approach. I agree with you, yes.
Right. So, my question is, the risk is if we say to them, okay,
Sabrina?
what we wanna do is we want you to get those poles out, because in theory, the poles are coming out in one week anyways, right? That's what we're hearing. So what we're really talking about is artificially pulling forward a schedule, um, just so Whole Foods can meet its press release versus holding off one week when the poles are removed and saying, okay, now you put, now you put everything else in place. And I, what I really would like to have as part of the final conversation is a true, um, sort of understanding of what the timing difference is. Because I feel right now that the wrong thing is wagging the dog, which is Whole Foods put out a press release that says we're gonna open October twelfth, and we're sitting there trying to like squeeze something to make that work. Whereas, if what we would say is, look, you guys left this to the last minute. They've known since August that this was gonna be a problem. Sabrina brought you in like eight weeks ago, by the time we interviewed you and contacted you and hired you, we knew this was coming. They knew this was coming. So my question is, if we wanna put safety first, you know, what the real time frame comparison would be if they were able to sort of say, okay, now we want you to complete this, get the poles out, put everything in place. Are we talking three weeks?
Everything, the re, everything, the re.
I, I, I would ju, I just wanna add one thing to that too.
Yeah.
So you said to get that temporary all walk phase with the signal head buttons for the pedestrians is a, a three to four week process.
Three to four weeks.
So, let's, let's assume that we're working, and I'm not saying that I'm in favor of it or anything, I'm just saying, let's make some assumptions, that we're working towards a TCO sometime next week. But obviously, these pedestrian measures won't be in place. They won't be in place for a month. So how do we talk about safety without talking about safety of pedestrians?
He said the police would be there and tell the signal.
Right.
And that, and that, and that, and that.
How further is that?
They're not there now.
But, but then that has to be, we need to have that as part of the plan.
Of course, it's gonna be part of the plan.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be okay.
But I'd like a comparison of what the real timing difference is, um, and what maybe the, the safety enhancements could mean for the public, because.
Okay, we have to wrap this up.
What we're thinking is that, um, if, unless, I, I know there's gonna be disagreement on, on various points, but I think we're reaching some sort of consensus that there is some sort of support for a TCO in some fashion, some way. And I think it.
For Tuesday, you're talking about.
Uh, not, not necessarily Tuesday. I don't think Tuesday can work, frankly.
I don't think Tuesday can work.
I just don't think it works. So, one thing we were just talking about was maybe, I personally think that an opening, whenever it's gonna be, should be on a Saturday. Get, take the schools out of the equation, make it a Saturday, big celebration type thing. It's easier, I think. But, I think we're all over the place right now. I think what we need to do is get all these different considerations and points to Lou. And so he's gotta, he's gotta get back over to Collins and say, you gotta give us some alternatives, you're gonna give us some plans, and you gotta do it fast so we can look at these things, review these things, and meet and see what we want to do. And, um, and, you know, obviously, the, the issues are safety, efficiency, but, um, I, I think, um, many of us are really concerned with the safety. And I, 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 I agree with Sheila. I mean, if, if you have that glaring problem, especially in dark hours with pedestrians, and you sit there and say, well, it's dark hours, yeah. The kids are still going back and forth at four thirty. They have extracurricular activities, they have sports, this kind of stuff. We really have to, I think, carefully look at, at alternatives to make this thing as safe as possible. I think we owe it to the community that we make it as safe as possible. Not just safe, I understand professionally it's safe, professionally it works at X level, but from my standpoint, uh, it's gotta be really safe and as safe as it possibly can be. But is there a consensus that we think that there, there, there's, there's traction here for a TCO of some sort? Limited in terms of square footage, timing?
There always has been, but it's, it's the conditions that we're.
What was the service share?
And it's better now after this discussion than it was a week ago. Uh, one thing is that if you make something as safe as possible, that means it's well-passed, practical, and what's affordable. So the word is.
Reasonable.
I, I have, yeah, reasonable. I, okay, so I think that's true. I think there should be signage that says Whole Foods opening. And you push the northbound traffic in the other way and you say, please feel free to, you know, use this to alleviate. Another sign blinker or whatever saying, you can go through the private property. That will eliminate it, eliminate the northbound issue. The, the westbound issue will, they will find the other way through the traffic light coming up. That leaves the people that are coming, you know, from, uh, the, I'm sorry, the southbound, then northbound. That's where we're all talking about it. And I think if you put the crosshatching and say, don't block the box, you know, at, at the main entrance, then the people don't have to make a left-hand turn. They can go forward and have a better chance of getting in at the, uh, the next, you know, the next entrance, which should be the main entrance.
Wasn't there blocking north?
And then, yeah, and then, I think that, uh, Tom and, Tom and I were talking a little bit. He doesn't agree with this, but he's willing perhaps to accede to it temporarily, is that it's part of the schedule. You go with Lou, so we need the data to see what the hell is happening. And it can, should be contingent, you know, this is a temporary order, you know, uh, TCO. But if it screws up, you know, then we may have to back off and we may have to change things, and Summit Greenfield has to know that.
One of the issues that we're going to have is when we initially get going here, we're soon going to go into school recess, and I think the data that we receive may not be as accurate as what we're gonna see in later January. So it's gonna be.
We can assume that data we receive will only get worse, and that's gonna be really scary.
Yeah, but we don't know, we don't know how much worse. It, it may not be that much worse. It may just be a couple of school buses, who knows?
Sure.
But people do grow.
But the timeframe, the timeframe of the real-time monitoring will need to be extended a long enough time.
There is good idea.
Maybe to the end of January.
Yeah.
So that we get a real picture. And Jeremy wanted to, well, he couldn't be on the call anymore, but he wanted to ask, what would we do given that they've announced an opening? And, um, he agreed with hot, your point, Holla, and he wants to make sure that there's a game plan in place to.
For Wednesday, maybe Wednesday.
They would, they would have to have cop, they would have to have cops on the, or reach out to them. They would have to have cops at their, well, they're gonna have cops here anyway, but maybe an additional cop for anybody who seems to think it's open. Obviously, there's gonna be a media blitz that says it's not opening. And, uh, but they're gonna have a cops there, extra cops that's gonna address that.
Yeah, we don't think our officers will be there for a TCO on, on Wednesday, correct? Cause we're not, we don't want to have a TESO, TCO on Tuesday. That's what I'm thinking.
But, but they've been announced.
Right, right.
But there've been articles in the paper, so you're gonna have to anticipate the traffic anyway.
So, the R R P, so you, are, are we gonna ask them to hire?
Yeah, we, that would be part of the conditions with.
Cause they need to do damage control.
Because, because, because of your press release, we're forcing them to hire officers.
Yes, absolutely. We could, they'll, they will do anything we want. What Whole Foods needs is a date certain. So what I would say is basically, let's, you know, get, put all this stuff together, all the traffic things we, all the safety things we've talked about, put it together. We have the vote on Tuesday night, and we tell them that it, it looks like you'll be able to open Saturday, and nothing's definite until Tuesday night, but.
Wait, wait, wait. No, no, no. I think, I think, I, I don't think we're there yet. I think, I think when they come back to us,
I don't think that, yeah.
they're going to come back to us with revisions to a three-phased MPT, but I think they need to understand that there is still serious skepticism as to whether any opening with the poles in the road is feasible. I, I think we're, I think we're still split on that point, and I think they need to come back to us with the revisions to the plan that will allow us to, to look into sort of that.
And, and so he, here we are today. Let, let's just kinda walk through this, okay? Because Lou is in the process of finalizing a memo to you, which set the stage for this discussion. This discussion has revealed certain things that you must.
I'd like Lou to actually incorporate this discussion into his final memo.
Well, and that, and that's why we're talking about.
I don't wanna like read two memos.
Okay, well, that's why we're talking about it. So he needs to do a revision to his memo based on today's discussion. That memo needs to be submitted to the town and transferred to the applicant. The applicant must come back with the plan that meets Lou's requirements. That is gonna take.
It's gonna take time.
It is gonna take time. The difficulty we've had has been the applicant delivering what the town needs to move forward in a timely fashion.
That's right.
So, so what's.
And, and if they deliver it Tuesday at five thirty PM, we're not even gonna consider it, you know?
Correct, correct.
So.
And they should know that.
We are, we, we, we are committed to a, a public, an extension of public hearing on, on Tuesday, yes?
Yes, well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this information will not be, from Lou will or will not be available to us?
Lou, when will you have the final memo to the town?
I'm, I'm, I'm not leaving here until I finish this memo.
He's staying here, right.
But, do you have spare belt ties?
I do.
Wait, a lot of things have been discussed, and I think what we should spend a couple of minutes on is getting, making a consensus of what things you'd like to have as changes so that Lou could put them in his memo and they can be transmitted.
Why, why don't Lou use it?
I don't think we should do the changes. What I think we should do is hopefully we've taken notes from what's discussed here.
Yeah, I would, I would grab all these notes together.
But also, I mean, uh, Jer, um, Jeremy's mentioned some things and, and, uh, and Rob said while they're looking at it, but let's put that into it right now about what, well, it is coming down the pike. Ivy, you've had comments, I've had comments, other people have had comments, written comments, Rob's had written comments. Let's get all of this on a, on a plate to these guys. Let them respond. Let them come up with their best efforts in response to all these comments.
I don't wanna pay him to do their work. No offense.
No, he is there today.
I agree, but we should, it's gonna have to help them.
Should, should.
They pay for it.
But here's what I'd like to put.
Yeah, he, they signed his scope of work. I am expecting a check from Felix for the amount of his scope of work, which is subject to change based on the, the effort he requires, so.
Okay, good.
Oh, he'll agree.
And, and I'm going to say that we need everything back from them by Monday at one PM so that we can look at it, you guys can look at it, have a discussion and be ready for Tuesday night.
So can, can I just, just my final comments, just two things, real quick? Is it, Lou, I'm concerned that on the one hand, we have a plan up there which you have said is safe enough, otherwise wouldn't be up there.
Right.
But a plan that has a no left turn would be safer. Now, now I'm in a, in a bind here.
Yes.
Because if we approve that plan, and you also said there was a plan that was safer, and there's an accident out there, somebody gets hurt on, on this plan, I don't know where I, where I stand. I mean, I approved a plan which is less safe than another one.
I think we've eliminated the left turn. I think that's a general consensus.
No, but I'm making a point, though. Let me just make a point. So, so if we are eliminating the left turn, let me just finish. We're eliminating, eliminating the left turn, we are telling the community that they have to live with this, this F, right? For we don't know how long, for a period of time that we don't know. In the service of, we're gonna make the statement, this is safer than the other plan that, that did not, that actually yielded a level of service, I think it was a B or a C. So that, we're gonna tell them that. I'm sorry, but it was safer than this.
No, it's a level of service D versus an F.
Level of service gets worse.
What do you keep, what you're saying though is that the level of service actually, the lower level of service actually increases safety. It slows down cars, and if safeties are number one concern, then we shouldn't be concerned if cars are going slower.
Then, if, if that's the case, then every intersection in town ought to be a level of service F. I mean, that's a statement that, yes, it's true, but it's not, it's not,
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying you do that on purpose.
It's not the way you organize your life, right?
I'm not saying you do that on purpose, but I'm saying at this particular intersection, let's face it, if you want it to be as safe as possible, slowing down the cars is, is actually a positive.
Then, then why, then why do we go through all the trouble to try and improve the level of service here ultimately? So that statement actually.
Well, no, it's because it's a construction zone.
Well, it's just gonna help.
Right, this, this is temporary.
Yeah, temporary. It's a temporary.
Is it temporary? It's a temporary solution versus a, what?
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
I have a question for you, just one more thing, sort of off of that one intersection.
Yeah. Phase.
Temporary solution.
So, driving home in the late dirty at night with no lighting and again, the corner comes up fast. The Roaring Brook Road is very bumpy. It's got lots of stuff. As part of the final, a part of the temporary condition, is that road and the associated paving going to be upgraded before the asphalt plants close, or they plan on leaving that road in that condition?
That's only one way, though, right?
I don't think there, I don't think there was any plan of paving.
Heading, yeah, it's heading east to west.
Paving Roaring Brook Road right now.
Well, it's only at the very top. They already paved the, um.
Yeah, east to west is paved west.
To east is.
No, east to west is not paved at the top.
It's, it's only like, yeah, it's, it's the very top.
It's bad, actually.
It's up there.
It needs to be, it needs to be.
At the intersection, exactly.
It could be passed.
One more quick one? This has to do with the Whipper Will Road thing. If we're going to, if, if we have landowners who are neighbors of this, who are willing to sell some of their property for the benefit of a crosswalk and the sidewalk, can we get them to sell property to the benefit of the sightline?
Well, that's, that's a school.
That's school property.
That's school property. It's different. It's on the other side. And the answer is.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Can, can we put up the plan again?
Uh, the town, it will.
The plan? Which plan?
Well, we don't know that until somebody actually.
It was right here. That last one we showed.
Do you mean Annandale?
I'm sorry, maybe I'm talking about Annandale.
Ah, that's right.
It's very far.
No, I want the other one, sorry.
You want the MVP plan?
The one you had.
I want any, any one of, just to look at this.
You're right, you're right about, you're right about Annandale, yeah, I agree.
I'm sorry, Annandale. I got my road fixed up. Everybody's concerned coming out of Annandale, they can't see the traffic. So if there's a way to take a little bit, have Bob look at the sightline here, draw that line and then talk to the.
Absolutely. Exactly.
It's unusual of a property for these people also, and they can tell they got lessons.
And also, Bob, I think Bob, you're gonna look at whether or not that, um, south lane can be extended, the pavement can be extended temporarily.
To increase the temporary turning lane.
Right, as an alternative, right.
They measured one seventy-four and they stopped and they had a plate, and they said they had some potential drainage. I gotta check with John
Right.
to see if they can extend that.
Right.
Good idea.
Cause that might help us with that left-hand turn lane. Still got the alignment issues.
We just need the taper. I mean, that's what takes off a big piece of it. And the final condition, they have striping, so people theoretically could, could use that stripe, that, that area.
Right.
So it's really, yeah, it's a combination of the taper and the actual turn bit.
What distance are you looking for, Lou, that, that they can give in the field?
What distance?
Including the taper and the layers, left turn.
We probably need two hundred feet.
Well, they're one seventy-four, so, pretty close.
But we gotta see what, what portion of that is the taper and what portion of that is the actual.
And that's gotta follow DOT guidelines as far as dimensionist.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the tough part is when you get the full width of the lane before you, before that's just tapered.
So just the lane is two hundred feet?
Uh, I would like, no, the, the whole thing would probably be two hundred, two hundred twenty-five feet, but you would want to have at least a hundred and fifty feet, maybe a hundred and twenty-five feet of full width length.
I think I'm. I think on the design, they get one forty, I believe.
And that was with taper. So we gotta, we'd have to look at that, or what they can come up with.
But if we get, if we get up to two twenty in the field, that's good.
So we should look at that. I mean, that could help us.
Well, he's looking for one twenty-five to one fifty at full width, so that's.
If it's possible. If it's possible with, with the alignment of the southbound lane going southbound, right.
But that's for them to tell us.
And I'm, I'm not sure this needs to be tied into this, this particular process, but the, the old entrance to Reader's Digest off one seventeen, it's a disaster, cause it's just like a big field of asphalt. It seems to me that that really needs to be, that needs to be narrowed, and there needs to be definite striping with left turn, right turn. It really needs to be done so that people who are making all those turns aren't lost in the field of, where am I, what am I doing?
He's, he's absolutely right.
Yeah. And if you could help us with that, I don't know where the turn your scope, but if you could help us with that, that'd be good.
That's, that's absolutely true.
All right, and I, and I think there should be some extra signage.
He's absolutely right. It's a mall.
Yeah. Do this now, give it to Lou. But down here where we work, keep your eyes closed, thank you. Down there, where we, there we go, more, more, more.
You're an expert.
Thank you, right here. Okay, so if a sign is put up, do not turn left for Whole Foods right here, and then you put the crosshatching back up here, and then you have a sign turn here, left, for Whole Foods, you're, then you're gonna eliminate the need, you know, for making a crazy left turn here.
But you're gonna have a left-hand turn without.
It's an unsignalized left-hand turn. Some will go. Think about it. Definitely. I would just rather capture all of these right turns, uh. Well, coming, coming down here, there should be a sign turn here for Whole Foods, so there's no confusion, and I'd like to do that.
So let's propose that. It does have to be done.
Crosshatching is essential at, uh.
Which is why I wanted to make sure that we can have the.
You don't have the crosshatching. Do not, you know, do not block the box.
See, right now, right now Roaring Brook Road going in that direction is twenty feet, which is enough for two lanes, but I wouldn't stripe it out that way just because it's not.
Guys, can we have a conversation, please?
No.
Apparently not.
Yeah, just going back to Roaring Brook Road and, and it really is only wide enough for one, uh, traveling. It's about twenty feet, uh, in width from pavement. It's a little, probably a little bit less. Whereas the other side, you can see the pavement that was added is definitely a little bit more. So, if there's any way to take some, uh, roadway, this is in the future, right?
So the applicant own that?
There's wetland, yeah, but there's wetlands, and that's why they couldn't do the, uh.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that's why they couldn't. I don't know about the median side.
No, the median, I think it's fine. There's wetlands, that's why they couldn't do the, uh, and they couldn't even do a real sidewalk over there.
Maybe, uh, maybe it's to take some of this median, and you only need a foot or two to get two lanes, which would be really good because when you get to the signal, you open up into three lanes anyway. So, having two lanes continue and stacking, it makes it all.
That's good, that's future.
It's probably safe for having two lanes into one, two lanes into one.
But maybe that should be part of the final build-out.
Yeah, I agree.
That should be part of the.
Two lanes into two lanes is better than one lane into the real thing.
Two lanes into three is better than one lane with the real thing.
Fo- folks, this is the, he hears the, here's the thing, and you know.
I think I think what we need is anything that we're considering that we think is gonna be good on the table, there's gonna be the short-term stuff they need to do to basically open up Whole Foods.
And then the law.
Next, and then the law's term stuff, but it should all be on the table, because we should document it, we should document it.
And just hopefully.
And just hopefully.
Yes, 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 so so whatever they discussed here today needs to go into your memo, because.
And what they have to do to open up Lifetime.
Which will have short term and long term.
Right, and and one of the things, you know, that was mentioned and I and I just wanna call it out to everybody, cause it was in a side conversation,
Medium term, like.
there was concern about people coming north, making a left-hand turn on Roaring Brook to go into Whole Foods at that, at the at at the Roaring Brook entrance.
Main entrance for Whole Foods.
If we put message boards directing traffic, like when you're going to um an event, and and we keep those message boards there
Sure.
for until the, this is completed, but the applicant would be required to purchase the message boards
Absolutely.
that the police have control over to make sure those messages are correct and continually running.
Well, they could be ran anyway, yeah.
They run them anyway, yeah.
Or or however you do it, but but there, but according according to lieutenant, having two of them
They run them.
would help do the directionals for folks, and people see those message boards.
Sure. So the the question we have, I think, procedurally, someone's have to get to work, um and this is really a question for Nick, Sabrina, Les and Bob and and Lou, in terms of getting memos out to the applicant, when's the reasonable expectation to get material back from them so that we can actually review it and then come back to them and say, here's some changes, here's some, we like this, we don't like this, but basically we're ninety percent there. What are we realistically looking at in terms of, if we're thinking of a Saturday opening, is it the eleventh or the eighteenth?
Let me just interject for a second, I I don't, I don't think we need their comments, to be honest with you.
January first.
I think we come up, you put your memo together and say, this is what we want.
Do it.
And you give us this, you give us your response within X amount of time, if you wanna open on this day, it's that simple. This is not negotiable stuff, we've all had a lot of meetings, this is what we want.
Whoa, I don't think we're ready, I don't think we're ready to commit to it, if you wanna open on this day, we need to get the plan from them.
Well, here's the thing, Lou, Lou realistically, this is a lot today for you to take in and edit.
Oh, we, we're telling them what needs to be in the plan.
How long will it take to.
We're telling them what they have to do.
We need to have a right to consider. We they need to be able to prove and come back with one question.
I I really wanna stay here and get it done.
And also, we do work with them.
I mean, the fact that the twelfth is not gonna happen, that needs to be communicated to them.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Before we have this, to a date to open before we have to review the next step. Alan's memo, Alan's memo goes out today.
I guess you would, you would phrase it not earlier than.
I can't, I'm working.
I I didn't say earlier, but you're correct.
So I I don't think Tuesday, he's saying one P M on Tuesday, because he needs time to.
Well, Monday.
Monday, Monday.
So my own feeling, but but the thing is, I don't even think we're ready for a vote on Tuesday, I think it should be communicated to them
They're not saying if they want us to consider Tuesday.
that a Whole Foods opening on the twelfth is not a realistic scenario at the structure.
We know, we know, that's, we know that, that's.
And they should stick something in the paper that says we're not open on the twelfth.
And I don't think we can commit to a date until it's clear to us, that they've understood and interpreted and are prepared to execute against the recommendations that we have.
And we will tell them, they have to respond to us by noon on Monday, if they want us to vote on Tuesday night, they're not gonna open on Tuesday night, they can't,
Right, and if they.
they're not opening on Wednesday, we know that already. The question is whether they could possibly open up on Saturday at this point, and that, and we're not gonna know that until Tuesday night.
Well, because they have to put the plan in effect to the satisfaction of the police before they open.
Yeah.
Right, and and as I talked before, I really like the sa- talking about the safety concerns, the pole, no pole.
Is there a consensus?
So.
Is there a safety, is there also a consensus that if 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 there's going to be an opening under a TCO, that it should be on a Saturday?
No, no.
I think that is a, I I think that's a good idea, um because you can control it better.
Good idea.
I I can.
Okay, so Rob, let me ask, as you, your your schedule is to have at the public hearing, a vote for a TCO or no TCO?
If if we get everything back by a certain date, if we give them conditions and we say, this is all we want and they give us a response by in a timely manner, yes, my my preference would be to have the vote on Tuesday night and and give them guidance, they want, we're asking, they're asking a lot from us and we're asking for a lot from them, and one of the things they're asking us for is to try to move as soon as possible and give them a date, a date perfect, I mean.
I don't think we can get that.
No, no, wait, hold on, just just to say.
And by, and by the way, let me just say this, this is not, so this is.
We're not allowed to vote a TCO.
Let me finish, hold on, so I ask a question for a reason, which is, I don't know what they're gonna get, I mean, I haven't seen what Lou's going to produce yet.
If we don't vote on the TCO, right? Oh, I know, I know, that's what we're saying, we have to.
So where, so where in the process do we get to review it before they get it, you, they, they're gonna get it on Monday, when do we get it?
Yes.
No, we, I I wanna finish, I wanna finish the.
They're gonna get it. They're getting it today from Lou.
But we have it, but we have, we have a look at it.
What are we getting?
Their response has to be due by Monday at twelve, no, we're gonna get it also.
All right, so if if I can prepare this this memo by noon today and send it to everyone, hopefully by, you know, three o'clock, four o'clock, we could send it out to them.
And they have to have response by Monday at noon.
Does everybody have between noon and three o'clock to look at this?
Well, why, we we have serious work, um this is not on you, we have serious work to do here and it seems to be that we need a little bit more time than we need at three.
I understand.
Well, they can give it, we can give it to them tomorrow then, we can basically say we have all day to review it tonight, then we give it to them tomorrow, so that's fine, they give tomorrow, listen, That would be better. they have to remove their passes, I mean, that's their problem, so we give it to them tomorrow, they have to get us response by Monday at twelve and then if we're if we're satisfied, then we have the vote on Tuesday.
But I think in in all fairness, it's, we gotta make sure that we're not shortcutting the process trying to meet this, I mean, you know, if there's
Yeah.
omissions and that if we give it to, let's say we send back comments to you and you need to revise it and doesn't go out to Sunday and then we want it on Monday at noon, they may not be able to do as thorough a job as they want, I feel like, you know, it should be a compressed and speedy timeframe with appropriate review time, recognizing that Tuesday's not gonna happen.
Well, that's that's.
But I I I really think that we can always have schedule, another special meeting for this coming Friday, if you need it.
I I would like to keep it on Tuesday, if you don't wanna vote, if you don't wanna vote for.
So that we can vote in a more, if you have a chance to view, if Bob has a chance to view, lawyers have to do it.
You don't vote for.
We're just continuing the public hearings.
We're gonna continue the public hearing, if you don't, if you, if you felt the process was rushed, then that that'd be your vote at that point, if ever the people feel satisfied,
No.
they have the opportunity to vote at that time.
So Rob, I I kind of agree with that, but I would like to suggest that we not promise them that they're gonna get something from us in a certain time or day, because.
I agree a hundred percent.
Because they they give us stuff the night before.
I agree, I agree, we have to be very specific about what it is, it's gotta meet our conditions, and then, you know, and that's it, and then
What we're gonna do.
we've, we will continue the public hearing on Tuesday, we will schedule the vote, and and people will vote based on if they feel that the, you know, we did it, we got everything we wanted and you're satisfied. If you make that clear, that works.
But we're still gonna have some alternatives too, that we're gonna get, I mean, Bob is gonna first, be talking with them about drainage and if they can extend, so there might be still some questions out there where, again, they have to present the alternatives to us, and they have to make a decision.
And they do. There's gonna be three phases, like, there's gonna be three, there's gonna be three phases, there would be one phase when less lifetime, I'm sorry, just Whole Foods opens
With our, with our staff and everything.
with the poles, maybe the poles won't be there, maybe we don't have that phase, the second phase is gonna be, and I honestly, I think we may not have that phase, I would, I didn't say, I wouldn't, I didn't think that last week, I'm actually thinking now. The second phase is when Lifetime opens, and the third phase is uh when uh they do the uh.
When the asphalt.
Asphalt work in uh the spring.
So is it fair to say that the only uh date reporting is a negative one, that at this point, the board is not considering allowing them to open?
Wednesday's off the board.
Definitely not opening Wednesday.
That's the only thing that really can be conveyed to them at this point.
That's off the table right now.
So what's our eternal deadline to get back on the draft?
Tomorrow morning, what do you mean, we respond to Lou?
To Lou.
By tomorrow morning?
What time?
I know you're better at setting deadlines than I.
Well, they follow them.
Right, they did.
There's, there is a difference.
I just make wise ass comments, I just make wise ass comments.
It's not early, because like they have to revise and then move the lanes.
We'll get it, we'll.
I would say nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, nine o'clock Saturday.
Nine o'clock Saturday?
Nine o'clock Saturday.
Get it, ten, ten, you want ten?
Yes.
It's a weekend, so I'm gonna walk and go.
Ten, ten.
Ten o'clock.
Well, this is, this is the draft review that will be circulated when Lou finally sends out the final with all of your changes
Right.
and it may not happen this weekend, because if you reply to all of them, send your changes, they may conflict.
We're saying.
So that'll that'll rise in the public hearing and we'll deal with it then.
And they have their response by, yeah, we love that.
Well, what do you.
Well, if 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 I'm asked to vote on something, which is in this memo, that I don't like.
It's worse than.
No, but what I, no, 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 Lou will, you guys are gonna review Lou's memo and make comments on Lou's draft memo.
Yes.
Ostensibly, Lou will revise that to a final man- memo incorporating your changes, and so I just wanna bring in, if there's conflicts,
Right.
you know, he he he's gonna use his best safety, I I don't know, I I don't wanna commit.
We can't, we can't go through like six cycles of his draft, so I'm just saying that it is what it is, it's a public hearing and we deal with it then.
No.
Correct.
I'm right.
And I would be willing to say that that if there is a conflict, then leave it up to Lou to use his professional judgment.
Good point.
Good point.
To say.
This is what it should be.
We just, I I cannot recommend this because of this.
That's a good point.
Does everyone agree with that?
So to the comment that you you feel is unreasonable.
And maybe maybe Lou in connection with the two chairs will make that decision.
I think we could all leave it up to the vote, because ultimately that will be part of the vote for the members of the board.
Exactly.
Yeah, but Lou has to produce a final memo.
I think we all agree that safety is the most important thing, and so if, at the end of the day, you're gonna, you should, you should um
Yeah.
uh side with safety, whatever you think is the safest approach.
He he's lost his groundswell of support.
I don't fully support, I've lost, I've lost some people though, maybe that's an indication, maybe that's actually.
It's like a pocket veto.
Exactly. Nick is shaking because we don't have the uh, he's got the planning board.
That's right.
We can deputize you.
Point of charge. We have that right, we can add, technically, we can add who we want.
So you're trying to have one more question, do we, do we ask some of the greenfield to say to newspapers, you're not opening on Wednesday, so everybody knows that in the public?
Yes. Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Who does that?
I will, I'm seeing them at ten thirty.
Okay. Okay.
And then there's a meeting at twelve with the poles at the trailer, anybody can come if you want, it's the uh with the uh Con Ed, Verizon, L T S, at the construction.
We don't wanna slow down, I'd rather have them go do ninety percent than say, oh, we can't do anything, let them do ninety percent.
Okay, so the town board meeting adjourned.
Good thinking, for the record, wherever.
Bob, you're gonna adjourn the planning board.
Wait, let me just say one thing real quick that Ivy mentioned, we talked about at the town board meeting on Tuesday, but nobody brought up today about that home liability issue. Uh certificates of insurance and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, we can discuss that in the executive session.
It was, it was outlined in the memo.
Okay, so we just, I don't want anybody to forget that, I guess we leave that to lawyers, not so much the uh traffic.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what we, what we.
Well, I know the insurance issues, we've heard the concern, we are, we're not gonna discuss it in an open session, we have the applicant had made a statement on the record, they've reached a suggestion, so we're gonna work with them on that.
Like the.
Good, okay.
Cool.
Okay, is there any motion?
I have to go.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
In an orderly fashion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. And and as, what was I, deputized, I'm gonna say aye too.
Yes.